Order. We're going to begin by standing for the Pledge of Allegiance and then we're going to remain standing as Deacon Chris Stark comes from to us for our words of encouragement.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic for which it spans, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Deacon Stark, thank you for joining us this evening.
One of the most countercultural aspects of our of a Christian faith is mercy and forgiveness. And so I apologize for having missed the last opportunity to pray with you because human error, but I am grateful for your kindness and extending an invitation for me to come back. So, so thank you for your mercy. God of all creation, 249 years ago, people in this land said, "We wish to be a people of freedom and of liberty and of democracy." We ask your grace, blessing, and peace upon the city council, the mayor, and the citizens of the city of Claussen, and all those who do business with the city, cognizant and mindful of the freedoms that we take for granted some days, thankful for our armed forces, thankful for the opportunity to express our grievances to our government, and for the opportunity to partner together and collaborate for the common good and the dignity of the human person. We ask that you continue to bless these proceedings and the people who work here so that long after this generation is passed into history, the city of Claussen and the community of Southeast Michigan will continue to thrive and grow because of the good works that are done here. We ask all of these, in your most holy name, we pray. Amen. Happy Fourth of July.
Thank you. Happy Fourth of July, and you are welcome here anytime, and we are all built on grace and mercy and are happy to bestow that upon you, and we're grateful for all that your church does for our community. You guys are a great partner in helping to encourage the people who live here. Thank you so much, and that would be guardian angels for anyone who doesn't know. Okay, thank you. Let's have a roll call, please, Michelle.
Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Mayor Milan?
Here.
Mayor Potam Moffett?
Present.
Councilmember Shepherd?
Here.
Thank you. Would someone like to make a motion to approve our agenda?
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve the agenda for July 1st, 2025, as presented.
Support.
Thank you. Roll call.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Mayor Milan?
Yes.
Mayor Potam Moffett?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd?
Yes.
Thank you. We've approved our agenda. We will move to public comment for items on the agenda. If you would like to speak to an item that is on the agenda this evening, we welcome you to the podium. We will allot you three minutes. We will ask that you give your name and your address, and if anyone's interested, come on forward. Okay, not seeing anyone move towards the podium. I will close public comment and move to item seven, which is proclamations and presentations. We haven't done this evening, so we'll move on to item number eight, which is consideration of approving the following consent agenda. Item A, minutes of the regular city council meeting held on Tuesday, June 17th, 2025, as presented. Item B, minutes of the joint workshop city council planning commission on Wednesday, June 18th, 2025. And item C is a list of bills in the amount of $987,972.53.
I move.
Support.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mayor Milan?
Yes.
Mayor Potam Moffett?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Thank you. We have approved our consent agenda. Moving on, we have, under item nine A, we have new business, which is consideration of the second reading and adoption of ordinance number 791 to amend the City of Claussen Code of Ordinances, Chapter 34, Article 10, Section 3.1I2, 1.2, Section 34, 3.1, permitted uses in the B3 district.
Madam Mayor, I move the second reading and adoption of ordinance number 791 to amend the City of Claussen Code of Ordinances, Chapter 34, Article 10, Section 3.1.1.2, Section 34-3.1, permitted uses in the B3 district be approved.
Support.
Thank you. Nick?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. Staff has recently been in contact with several interested parties for different properties in the B3 zoning district for various business and commercial uses. The uses that they are proposing are not currently deemed to be permitted but seem to fit within the intent of the B3 district. The planning commission approved this there at a previous meeting and presented to the city council. The ordinance that will be amended is Section 3.1I2 to add indoor fitness, recreation, meeting, medical office, and banquet uses as permitted uses in the B3 district. The first reading of this ordinance was approved at the June 17th, 2025 city council meeting.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Let's proceed with the roll call vote. Michelle?
Mayor Potam Moffett?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Mayor Milan?
Yes. Thank you. We have just approved an adoption of ordinance number 791 to amend the City of Claussen Code of Ordinances, Chapter 34, Article 10, Section 3.1I2, Section 34, 3.1, permitted uses in the B3 district. Thank you. Next, we have item 9B, which is consideration of awarding the bid to the lowest qualified bidder, PK Contracting LLC, at 1965 Barrett Drive, Troy, Michigan, 48084, for the 2025 major road pavement marking program.
Madam Mayor, I move the bid for the 2025 major road pavement marking program be awarded to the lowest qualified bidder, PK Contracting LLC, 1965 Barrett Drive, Troy, Michigan, 48084. Total award amount of $137,291.01 be approved as presented.
Support.
Thank you. Mr. Riker?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This project's scope includes updating the pavement markings at 14 Mile Road between Crooks Road and Rochester Road, as well as Main Street between the South City Limit and West Maple Road. One bid was received from PK Contracting LLC. Their total bid amount is $137,291.01. AW has worked with PK Contracting LLC on multiple road projects within the city of Claussen and many other communities. PK Contracting LLC is a contractor who previously completed the pavement markings on 14 Mile Road between Crooks Road and Rochester Road, as well as Main Street between the South City Limit and West Maple Roads.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions?
I have a question. There's only one bid. Did everyone else refuse to bid, or did we not solicit other ones, or why is there only one?
This is basically the biggest monster in the area. There's only one company that provides the service, basically, in the Detroit metro area.
So no one else bid it out, or we just asked one person?
No, it was put out for bid.
Okay.
And no one else bid.
All right. Anything else? Roll call, please, Michelle.
Councilmember Shepherd?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Mayor Milan?
Yes.
Mayor Potam Moffett?
Yes.
Thank you. We have just approved awarding the 2025 major road pavement marking program to PK Contracting LLC for a total amount of $137,291.01. Moving on to item 9C, we have consideration of the purchase of an ECO 900 VAC combination truck and additional equipment.
Madam Mayor, I move the purchase of an ECO 900 VAC combination truck, a CV350 model multi-hog sweeper, a step trailer mounted premix heater for asphalt, and a step oil-jacketed vertical kettle from Brown Equipment Company at a combined price of $499,995. Be approved as presented.
Support.
Thank you. Mr. Riker?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The DBW is requesting the approval on the purchase of the ECO 900 VAC combination truck, a CV350 model multi-hog sweeper, a step trailer mounted premix heater for asphalt, and a steep oil-jacketed vertical kettle from Brown Equipment Company at a combined price of $499,995. Much of this equipment was discussed at the February 2024 and March 2025 budget discussions and is in the current budget approved for '25, '26 for the amount of $550,086. DBW staff are present for discussion.
Great, thank you. Would you gentlemen like to speak? Good evening.
Yep, this was all presented now two times. It is essentially going to replace our current Vector, which is kind of, it's reached its lifespan, so the cost of maintaining it is far surpasses what we're prepared to spend. So if you have any questions on any of the equipment.
So I have a couple of questions. Number one, we have a nice full house today, and some of those people may not have been present at the budget hearings, and it's a half a million dollars that we're looking to spend. Can we talk about what each of these equipment pieces are going to do for the community and why there's a need for them?
All right. So the ECO VAC is a combination water and sewer truck, so for our purposes, it does everything from emergencies such as water main breaks, service repairs, water service repairs, stop box repairs. It will jet sewers, so the current CCTV that's going on right now, we can do that in-house. We could do that with our current Vector. Our staff is not up the snuff on the operation of that, but with this truck does come training, so we can get more training in that. So it would be sewer cleaning, it would do hydroexcavations, so using high-pressure water to essentially dig a hole for us. There is some advantages to that because mistig has not regulated hydroexcavating as much as they have anything else, so we can start some of our projects without having to put in a mistig because you're using high-pressure water instead of a shovel.
Sort of go around the pipes.
If you, it essentially breaks down the material, and then we just suck it up with the truck, and then we have to go dump it. But that is the ECO VAC combination truck. The other pieces of equipment, we did demo, we've demoed that truck two different times. The CV350 multi-hog is a smaller one-person sweeper, essentially. It has over 350 different attachments. We could attach anything from plows, salters. There's a big push now for, instead of salt, using brine. So there's attachments that can go on the back for brine. The one, the attachments that come with it currently, what we would purchase are basically dual brooms in the front, but it's a smaller piece of equipment, so it can get into smaller areas, corners, on-street parking. It can do our sidewalks. Currently, for us doing sidewalks, we have guys with backpack blowers that blow it into the street, and then our sweeper comes by, so a three-man operation turns into a one-man operation, so that's fairly nice. The two other pieces of equipment, the step trailer premounted premix heater for asphalt or the hot patch trailer that was brought before you, we thought it was going to be out of our price range. This wasn't something that we were really expecting, but with this package deal, this unique deal that we're asking to get from Brown Equipment, this was something that we would really like to have. So using hot patch instead of cold patch, cold patch is actually more expensive, but it's only more expensive because the hot patch machine, you have to have the trailer or the hot patch trailer, so that's where the more expensiveness comes from, hot patch. So we have to spend the money to have the trailer, but the actual material is slightly cheaper. But that material is actually more durable and longer lasting. Cold patch is basically a bunch of rocks together, so in the wintertime, when it freezes and melts and freezes and melts, it just ends up coming out and the pothole is still there. So this is more of a long-term fix instead of using hot patch, instead of using the cold patch, which is a temporary fix. And then another, this oil-jacketed vertical kettle is actually something that we didn't really have in our radar, but when they presented it to us, we thought, this is something that helped maintain our roads. We just passed by them, putting a lot of money towards roads. This will help maintain some of our current good roads. So this will be the tar in the middle of the pavement, so it's going to joint and crack seal those, so it basically waterproofs the joints. So a lot of our roads fail actually from the bottom and not the top, so water gets into those cracks, that's where it freezes, and it breaks down the concrete underneath, and then that's where our roads start to fail. So if those are constantly maintained and sealed, then the water can't get in there.
And it's less than what you anticipated.
They are giving us a package deal if we purchase them all to take more additional money off, so we would actually have a little bit extra money for possibly more attachments for the multi-hog.
And if I recall correctly, we were doing an internal loan from ourselves, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
So it's like spending it out, but budgeting and paying interest to back to an account is what I recall.
Yeah.
Right. What other attachments would you potentially want to get from that machine?
So this one actually comes with the sweeper, which is great, and it comes with a boom on the back that we can actually do catch basin cleaning in smaller areas that before we would have to bring out our combination truck. So some, we have catch basins in the middle of fields around a football field that they just, they're hard to clean, so with this piece of equipment, we'll be able to do that. But definitely something like a plow, or I would think something with brine to be able to do the brickwork downtown and not constantly having to be using salt and/or the calcium pellets, which I'm not a big fan of.
They're expensive.
They are expensive.
Great.
I was just curious if you could elaborate on the brine, you know, how that's applied, how it's stored on the vehicle and where we would keep it.
So we currently have brine, so we have a storage that holds 1,200 gallons. So we have a piece of equipment, we can mix our own brine, which is essentially just salt and water.
Yep.
And it breaks it down. We store that. Two of our, well, two of our current, three of our trucks should be able to do it, but one of our trucks that might be, well, is planning to be replaced also this year. All newer trucks come with the ability to apply brine, so two of our newer trucks can apply brine while we salt the roads. Something like the multi-hog would just have a tank on the back with sprayers, so we would, the width of whatever the sprayer is, I believe it's five feet, and we would just go up and down the pavement with that.
And that could be applied on the sidewalk as well?
Yeah.
Anything else you want us to know?
Well, outside of this particular purchase, we are planning on coming back to you with more things that are in the budget, but we're looking at two dump trucks and a utility truck. So this won't be the last time you see us.
No, I think at your open house not too long ago, someone pointed out to me, these need to go, end of life cycle, end of life cycle.
I will tell a very quick story that me and our mechanic were sitting at the back of one of our garages, and one of the dump trucks that was, needs to be replaced, blew an air tank just sitting there, so it was unexpected, and then our mechanic had to get to work.
How did it do that?
I don't know.
Thank God for the mechanics, right?
Yeah, thank God.
Well, thank you so much for being here this evening and for saving us some money. We appreciate that. Is there any other questions? Let's call for a roll call vote, please, Michelle.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Mayor Milan?
Yes.
Mayor Potam Moffett?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd?
Yes.
Thank you. We have just approved the purchase of an ECO 900 VAC combination truck, a CV350 model multi-hog sweeper, a step trailer mounted premix heater for asphalt, and a step oil-jacketed vertical kettle from Brown Equipment Company at a combined price of $499,995. To make DPW's life better. Okay, next up, we have on agenda, item 9D, we have consideration of the appointment for the city council vacancy.
I think we need to have a motion in order to begin the proceedings. I move that we decide on who our next appointment is for a city council vacancy to determine to expire on November 17th, 2025, pending our decision. So I guess that's a motion.
Support. Okay. So, Mr. Riker, do you have ideas?
Sure. At the June 3rd, 2025 city council meeting, the city council approved moving forward with the application process. Applications were due by June 12th, 2025 at 12:00 noon. The city clerk received 10 applications for the vacancy. The applications were considered at the June 17th, 2025 city council meeting, and direction was given to the administration to move forward with the listed four applicants to interview at a special meeting yesterday at 7:00 PM. The interviewees were Alexander Aprili, Andrea Lalande, Lauren Matar, Richard Scott. Tonight is the determination by council on who is to be appointed to the vacancy.
Thank you. So I know someone has an idea of how they would think this perhaps should go, and having a conversation?
Madam Mayor, if I may, I think, you know, to try and avoid, you know, a long-drawn-out situation, I think we should do ranked choice, write down our choices at one time, and then go through, if there is a majority on the first, then we're done with that. If at the first process of our first selections, there's a tie, I think at that point, we need to come up with a tie-breaking decision on who should advance and who should not, no longer be considered in that first round, and then past that, whoever was a second choice would then be considered as that person's first choice, and so on. So I think at that point, we can go down and we'll eventually get to who the majority person would be.
We can't write stuff down and keep it secret, though. We have to have conversations out in public.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
So we go one by one, talk about the order of our.
Yes.
Yeah, and then we just, once that's out there, we'll say who they are, and then we don't need to say it again and again and again because we already know who they are.
Gotcha.
But I think as far as we have a decision on what the tie-breaking decision is, that if, you know, if they did not, we'll have a majority, if we don't have majority, we'll have at least somebody that is at least 50%, in my opinion, right? And then if there's two people that are tied for not having the most, then we need to make a decision on how we move forward beyond that, so.
For clarification, so then are you suggesting that each council member rank them one through four?
Yes.
And then you add those numbers together, and the lowest being the ones moving forward?
I would say that if that's the case, that, you know, for, if in case of a tie, moving forward, the person who has the lowest, I hate to say that term, but the least support.
Well, the number would be larger for the least support because there would be, just for clarification.
Yes, exactly.
Up the front.
So we're ranking them, one being the first choice, four being the last choice, for clarity, correct?
Like golf, lower numbers are better.
Right.
First, second, third, fourth.
Yep.
Okay. All right. Are you prepared to do that?
I have my list.
Hey. Michelle, you'll keep tally?
My best.
Okay.
My first choice would be Lauren Matar. My second choice would be Alexander April. My third choice would be Andrea Laland, and my fourth choice would be Richard Scott.
Okay. Councilmember Anderson?
Well, actually, I hadn't come in prepared to rank. I actually had, as I mentioned yesterday, it was a painful exercise for me because I like all of them. But since you're putting me on the spot with rankings, I will say, number one, Richard Scott, number two, Ms. Laland, number three, Mr. April, April, and number four, Ms. Matar.
Okay. And Councilmember Shepherd?
So for me, first would be Mr. Scott, second would be Mr. Aprili, third would be Ms. Laland, and fourth would be Ms. Matar.
Okay. My first is Richard Scott, my second is Andrea Laland, my third is Alex Aprili, and my fourth is Lauren Matar.
Michelle has the tally, don't look at me.
So I'm going to tally the number in the first position that matches, correct? So we have three for Richard Scott. And we have one for Lauren. Second, we have two for Alex April. And also two for Andrea Laland. Third, we have two for Andrea Laland, and two for Alex April. Last, we have two for Lauren Matar. Three, excuse me, three for Lauren, and one for Richard Scott.
Okay, so the first person was, with the highest voting was, in the first position place, was Mr. Scott, correct?
That's right.
Okay. Which would mean that's our majority selection. I would like to tell everyone, I wrote so many things about what people said yesterday, and I was inspired by everyone, honestly. I think, I think it's really hopeful that we have people of the caliber who came forth and submitted the information, and then took their time out to come and speak with us and interest to serve on this board, that it was really, it was just uplifting, and I think we have a lot of good things to look forward to if these people engage with our community, and I think that's a great thing. And I think today's decision, for me personally, was far less about whom I feel like would be best, but who might be best at this time, who might come prepared with the most background on Claussen and most able to kind of just pick up and move with this existing body and kind of work towards the things that we've been working on. And considering it's a, you know, five-month gig, I mean, significant things will happen within the next five months, I just think working, looking for someone who will work with us and has, brings knowledge, a wealth of knowledge with them. Mr. Scott, my ultimate reasoning was because he has served on planning for the past year or two, and planning is like the best ground-laying education system you can get in this community if you want to figure out how we do, what we do, and why we can and can't do it. And I, those are my thoughts on all of that. Anyone else?
Yeah, I was, you know, sincerely looking forward to getting some new ideas, some fresh people, not going with the old, familiar friends of the council in place. I was really hoping to get some fresh new people, but I hope those people will decide to run, and we'll see them in November, and onward and upward.
I think calling any of them old people is probably not cool.
Not age-wise, people that have been around for a long time, to clarify, not age-discriminating people that have been around and getting fresh new faces, I think is, was an exciting opportunity that we're letting slip by.
Well, if I may, Madam Mayor, I certainly think Mr. Scott has a fresh new face, right? So you've been in this town for a while, but at the same time, it's only been recently that you've been willing to serve our community, and I commend you for that. And again, coming from a background in planning, that was the path that I saw as best that would fit our immediate need for, without having to, and I appreciate the willingness of everybody else, but there is a learning curve, and we need to hit the ground running and making sure that we've got the right decisions moving forward, and whatever those decisions may be, right? So, but at the same time, I don't know you. That's something that I've learned from having the interaction that we did at the joint meeting, that you come prepared and that you have sound decision and rationale behind your thought process, and that was something that I really appreciated. And again, I really appreciate everybody who came and spoke. It takes a lot in order to put yourself out there and, you know, express yourself in a way that we really, I mean, I considered everybody seriously. That was the deciding factor, was what do we have for, I guess, institutional knowledge right now, and that's what the deciding factor for me was.
Well, I guess I can just reflect on what others have said. Honestly, again, it was painful for me because I liked all four, but we don't get to pick four, we're going to pick one. So again, I chose Mr. Scott based on his experience, and I've seen him in action, so. On the other hand, the other three, Ms. Laland, Ms. Matar, and Mr. April, I thought you did excellent, and I would really love to see somebody run in November. If you decide to do so, I will sign your petition. And however, you'll have to move quickly because the clerk, the 22nd is the date, so you'll need between 20 and 49 signatures, and vote from there.
Just as a reminder, you can only.
Just as a reminder, you can only sign the number of petitions that there are open seats. So just, so, there's, how many open seats?
Oh, the four for council.
Four, you can only sign four people's petitions for council, just as a reminder to everyone.
I'm...
Just throwing that out there, I know people get confused about that, so. Can't sign them all.
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
Madam Mayor, I need to bring to the council's attention, you read Section 4.31 in regards to defaulters not qualified to hold office. Any, says no person who has been convicted of theft, misuse, or appropriation of public funds, or is in default to the city, or any other governmental subdivision of the state of Michigan, or who has been convicted of a felony, shall be elected or appointed to any office of the city. All votes for, or any appointment of such person shall be void. I believe that the clerk could made council aware that there was a member of this candidate pool who was in default and remains in default.
So, does that make them ineligible to be appointed?
According to Section 4.31, it says, anyone who is in default to the city, all votes for, or any appointment of such person shall be void.
All right.
Would you like to define default?
Yeah, define default.
Yes. Sorry, I'll have to look that up in the charter real quick, the actual definition I'm not seeing a definition for it, in the code.
In the code?
Yeah.
Okay. I think we need a definition. I mean, is it the fact that they're on the tax roll, that that's been assumed as being a bill that has been gone unpaid for months and months?
It's a water bill.
It's a water bill?
Is it still unpaid?
This is correct, it's still unpaid.
As of, as one...
As of today.
As of today?
No, no, sorry, no, it was, since the specifics, I think Michelle can speak to, but the last bill was due the 23rd, and still remains to the tune of about $245.
Okay, the 23rd of June?
Correct.
Okay.
So if we were to have someone who was, who had submitted petitions, they would have to sign an affidavit saying that they're not in default, if I recall correctly, right?
That is part of the affidavit.
And if someone had an unpaid bill, that would be a misrepresentation of the affidavit, correct? That's how you adjudicated that in the past, is that true?
It's part of the affidavit, so.
Okay, so that's been our standard, not just since the inception of this charter, but for a while.
That is what the charter says, that's what it has said. There was a section in the old charter that, you know, was eliminated on editor's note, but that has been very clear.
So again, I, I'm looking for the definition of default, whether it's seven days past due, is that default? Because quite honestly, you know, that's general business practice, that you don't necessarily pay your bills on time, depending on whatever your cash situation is, who knows what it may be. But I wouldn't necessarily, I don't know, I guess I'd like to have a clear definition of that. It's not a great position to be in, but I certainly, I would think that there may be some extent, I don't know, I guess I need a definition of the...
It is at the time of the vote, however. At the time of the vote, they're in default, correct?
When you, when you receive a water bill, and there is a past due amount, it says past due amount, it doesn't say default. When something goes to the tax rolls, then it's a default. That, does that make sense?
Well, that's what I'd like to have a definition for.
I mean, I can tell you what the dictionary says, because I pulled it up.
Yeah, I can go with a dictionary definition, but yeah, there's not one in the charter. Default, according to Merriam-Webster, failure to do something required by duty or law. Failure to pay financial debts.
If something went to the tax roll, I would take that as a default, 100%. Like, I don't know who here, maybe no one here has ever been late on anything, maybe people here haven't had periods of time where they were unemployed, and maybe people on this dais have paid their taxes or water bills late, and we just don't know it. So I, our opening comments this morning talked about mercy and grace. I'm 100% with following what our charter says, but I personally do not feel that being a week late on a bill makes you a defaulter. I think that, that gives the city eight more dollars or something.
No, ma'am. Michelle, are you at liberty to discuss the history?
Of the water bill?
Correct.
I mean, it was non-payment for longer than one, one bill.
Did it go to taxes? Because it didn't, right? Because we, we put all, everything to a tax roll in March?
I think it's six months in arrears to go to taxes. I don't know the history of what went to taxes, I don't have that before me.
So I think we're grasping at straws to, to, to move forward a candidate that by definition, if they were submitting their petitions to run, would be deemed unqualified, based on nothing other than the criteria that we've set forth for our elected officials.
Well then, should we also require that each person here tonight have 25 signatures? Because that's also part of the requirement to run for office in the city of Clausen? No, we're not going to do that.
That's not required for an appointment, so that's a non-applicable criteria. But the criteria is for, the charter says that someone is default, and if, they've explained several times, it's more than just this current past due bill. So that's a standard, a minimum standard that we've set for people to sit on this dais. And I think that we have an obligation to uphold the charter. We have a playing field of really great candidates, so we should look at the next most viable candidate, based on this information.
Yes, and if you hadn't selected this candidate as your number four choice, you'd probably rally a little bit.
That is absolutely not true, because I believe in upholding the charter. That's, that's what people voted on, that's the standard they wanted us to govern by. I wasn't necessarily in favor of most of the provisions of the charter, but that's what the people said, that's what they're asking us to do. And we have an obligation to do that.
If we could be clear, are they, are they past doing the most recent bill? I mean, if they've been late in the past, that's the past. I'm saying, are they currently unpaid?
The, the most current bill is unpaid. There was a payment made on June 30th to pay the past due amount.
So the past due amount was paid, and this is the current amount due?
Wasn't paid in full.
So it's compounded upon itself.
Stop. I want a real definition of default. I don't think, I think, I truly, I'm not, I don't care who this is, I would fight for this regardless. I feel a default is when it goes to your tax roll. I do not feel default is because you were late. I don't think it's the same thing. It's not at all the same thing to me.
You know, the time to perhaps have this discussion was when the information was first sent to us, because it was sent to us quite a few weeks ago, and clarity could have gotten, gained at that point as well. But we have the information...
But clarity is the fact that we need to have a definition of default. I mean, the fact that it's paid or not paid, I don't feel, and again, it's an opinion, but that's the reason why I'm looking for something else that defines what the fault is. I mean, is it because of its malice, right? I mean, then yeah, that's it, right? So, but I don't think there's malice involved.
I think she's described a history of not paying in a timely manner.
Can we talk about, shall we sit here and talk about everyone's personal financial history, and not talk about what today is? I think that's a little bit brash.
Everyone who's offered themselves to be spoken about in public forum, that is what the open meetings act requires us to do, and yes, it is uncomfortable, but that's our obligation. So we can stop having this conversation and move on to another candidate who doesn't meet this disqualifying criteria, or we can continue to talk about it.
But the criteria hasn't been defined. All it says is default. Is it non-payment, or is it because it's something that has gone to the tax rolls and is purposeful?
So, again, Michelle identified that if someone was doing the affidavit of whether or not you're in default with the city, not having paid a water bill would qualify that for being not having...
And the definition of default, what is it?
She also, it's not fulfilling an obligation, and we of residents have obligations to pay our bills in a timely manner, on a regular basis. That was Webster's definition, right? An obligation to, or fulfilling an obligation, or failure to fulfill an obligation. And the obligation is to pay your bills on a regular basis.
The, this, the verbiage, the default should be consistent with other defaults utilized within our city, with when something is actually in default. And I will go back to the water bill, because that is what we were talking about. And I would like to see a water bill, and see what it says when you're tardy on your water bill. Does it say automatically you're in default? I'm going to guess it says past due. I'm going to say, when we put things on the tax roll, because people didn't pay, we then say they are in default.
Interestingly, as, looking up again in the definition, it gives examples of failure to make mortgage payments, missing loan payments, not paying taxes. It talks about the definite, the examples that go with the definition of failure to fulfill an obligation, most commonly in legal and financial context, or preset option, or in setting in technology, and it talks about financial obligations. It signifies a failure to pay a loan, pay a loan, or meet other obligations financially. So the accepted definitions of the term default speak predominantly to financial obligations.
Well, those are not the terms that are commonly used in our community when talking about money. So I would like to make a motion that we do not proceed with this until we have a legal definition that shows where the word default is used throughout our municipality. At what point does someone actually become in the legal default, not just late? And if it's one of the same, then I'm wrong. But I think it's not fair to say, if you're seven days late, that you can't do something.
We also have an obligation to appoint someone within 30 days, and that's our day.
We have had that obligation in the past, and although it was not really popular, we maintained for an extremely length, long length of time in that particular situation, and it was not at all detrimental to our community.
Let me ask, Madam Clerk, some payment was made on June 30th, but it was not sufficient to clear the balance. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
I'll, I'll share a little more, to say that there was a payment made before it was transferred to taxes. So there was a default at time of transfer. The resident gets a chance to pay, so it doesn't get transferred. And what I know from typical past experience has always been six months in arrears, which is two bills in arrears. So if the resident makes a payment, it does not get transferred to taxes, but that did not get rid of the past due amount. It just paid an amount to keep it from going to taxes. So they made a payment.
So it's not in default?
It was still in default, even after that payment, it was still in default.
It was still in arrears, it may not be a fault. I guarantee you, if you don't make three house payments, they don't, they're not going to foreclose your house. No judge will sign off on a foreclosure of a house. It has to be a history of non-payment. I knew a gentleman who was very concerned about going to jail for lack of child support payment, to which, again, I know attorney, I'm no judge, but I have a sister who is, and they basically don't want to throw you in jail right away. There's a certain point at which, when you are in arrears, things turn bad. There's a certain point where you don't pay your taxes, they will confiscate your property. Again, I'm an amateur, but I would think that default is a stronger term than being late on a bill.
They don't throw you in jail when you're behind on child support, because then you have no ability to pay child support and earn money. They do do things like take away your driver's license and other punishment for failure to meet your obligation.
Let's stick to the topic, please.
So I am just clarifying how your example was not...
We're just getting off topic.
I appreciate your clarification of the example, that's fine. But yes, I do have people in threat with jail. So it does have, I agree, it's illogical, but it happens. But meanwhile, let's not play lawyers here.
Thank you, that's what I'm saying, like, because there's a thousand ways to go. I made a motion, will anyone support my motion?
Support.
Thank you. Any comments?
What was the motion?
The motion is that we do not proceed with this this evening until we have an opinion by an attorney that shows us where in our community we use the word default, and that we look at our past due water bills, and see at what point do we consider it default and send it to taxes, as opposed to late, and we accept a late payment. Roll call, please.
One second. So the motion, Mayor Milan, support by whom?
I missed who supported it.
You did?
Yeah.
Yes.
Mayor Protan Moffett?
No.
Councilmember Shepherd?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Okay. We're not a clique, we're a group that thinks, thinks, we're a group that thinks. But thanks for giving us that, it's always good to be part of a group. We just made a decision that, we just made a motion, and approved that we will come back to this after we have a legal decision to determine the appropriate verbiage, so that we can make a sound decision at that time. So we can move on to unfinished business, which we have none. We'll look at public comments for items not on the agenda. We welcome anyone who would like to speak for anything that was not on our agenda this evening, come forward, we'll allot you three minutes, please state your name and your address, thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Julia Beatty, 159 North Bywood Avenue. I am here this evening as a resident who has been systemically ignored for 11 years regarding a dangerous and deteriorating sewer situation at the intersection of Bywood and Broadacre Avenue. For 11 consecutive years, I have documented, photographed, and reported severe flooding at this intersection during every significant rainfall. For 11 years, I have provided the city council, city manager, and your predecessors with comprehensive evidence of this ongoing hazard, and I have received overall silence and inaction in return. This is not a minor inconvenience, it is a public safety crisis that the city has chosen to ignore. The intersection becomes impassable during heavy rains, creating a dangerous condition for residents and emergency vehicles, and our street is an emergency vehicle route. I understand the engineering challenge. Widening the sewer cover openings risks backing sewage into residential basements, which is not acceptable. But the complexity does not excuse for 11 years of complete inaction. What makes this situation even more egregious is that last spring, the City Planning Commission approved four massive home builds, right on the corner, projects that increase your tax revenue while simultaneously adding thousands of gallons of additional stormwater runoff directly into the failing intersection. It was knowingly approved that it would worsen the drainage problem over the past decade. This presents not just negligence, but willful disregard for public safety in pursuit of tax revenue. Let me be crystal clear about the legal implications of continued inaction. Under Michigan's Governmental Tort Liability Act, if a defect in a sewer, storm, or drain system isn't repaired in a reasonable time, it ends up, or ends up causing injury or damage to property, the government agency that owns and operates the system can face liability if it knew it should have, it could have been a danger, or needed repairs. The city council, city manager, DPW, and Oakland County Commissioner Penny Loops during her time here, had been repeatedly made aware of this condition. 11 years of documented complaints established clear knowledge of the hazard. Your failure to address this known defect creates potential municipal liability for damages or injuries that occur as a result of flooding. Under Michigan law, municipalities can... Under Michigan law, municipalities cannot simply ignore known infrastructure defects. The Government Liability for Negligent Act holds public entities liable for sewage disposal systems, events, when the defect in the system is 50% or more of the cause of the damage or injury. Your prolonged inaction in the face of documented evidence establishes the very negligence that strips away governmental immunity. Moreover, approving construction that exacerbates a known drainage defect, the city has compounded its liability exposure. You cannot claim ignorance of the consequences when you actively approved a development that worsens a problem you have documented knowledge of for over 11 years. I will email you the rest, because I have more, but we're not asking for miracles, we're asking for an engineering study, not just pipe cleaning and recording. It's a bigger problem than that. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Julia. Anyone else? Okay, the Mc... Oh, we do have someone.
Hi, Jamie Gillis-Takanochi, kind of hit my voice back. I just wanted to state again, it sounds like it's a requirement to give your address, it is illegal to require an address to speaker. I'd asked that to be addressed before, seemed to been, but it's gone back. And then I just want to talk about this business of default. Number one, we're now in violation of our charter because we didn't pick this. And again, because we didn't have a process, because there wasn't due diligence, there's a whole bunch of reasons. And I feel that it was very inappropriate to say to Sue that you're only fighting this because that's your fourth choice. Was your first choice for three of you maybe that that's why the three of you are fighting, right? There's always...
This public comment is for items not on the agenda, and this is an item that you're discussing that was currently on the agenda, so do you have anything else you'd like to discuss?
Then I would just say that I think you, you all are very inappropriate to each other and to the community. You disrespect us, you don't listen to people, and you don't have discussions about important things, which makes me wonder, do you talk about it somewhere else? Hiring somebody is a big, big decision. I hired for years, I was trained to hire, I was trained to interview. We never had a committee that said, well, let's just vote and not say anything about it, let's not share our voices, let's just vote. That's, there's something that strikes me as wrong about that, and probably not best practices. So, I would really, really ask you to think about the public and what our right is to know about your thought process, and our right to come to a meeting without childish play at the dais. Thank you.
Anyone else?
My name's Mike, I've lived in Claussen for about 35 years. I'm just curious, who came up with the back page of the third edition of, or the second edition of this magazine that you guys sent out, the quarterly magazine?
I'm sorry, this isn't a back and forth time, but if you'd like to ask a question, you can come, and the city manager will be happy to answer it afterwards.
You know what it's about, though, don't you? It's a Grant Wood picture.
I actually don't know what you're talking about.
I believe you're on it.
Did you like it?
No. Did you pay infringement, or did you pay trademark?
I will be happy to answer that question after we have this meeting. If you'd like to address any questions to me personally, happy to address. Don't leave, I'd be happy to address that. Anyone else? Okay, great, we will close public comment, and Michelle, city clerk's report?
The only report I have tonight is, I can give a, I thought I had a complete cost of the election, I'm still waiting on one piece of the May election. So, just publicly to say that the cost of our election, for the May election, as it stands right now, is $26,322.70. That being said, I also want to make note that I plan on addressing the early voting portion of this with the county, because a big portion of this election was due to, when I say big portion, $11,000 of it was due to early voting. We had 52 people turn out to vote at early voting for that nine days prior. The law, the federal law, or the states, that we will do nine days of voting for federal and state elections. The county has, since we're in contract with the county, the county has indicated that we had to have early voting for all elections. So, I'm going to address it with our county clerk and the county commission to see if there's any way that we can possibly be able to waive early voting on a smaller election, because $11,000 is a lot of money for 52 voters. And I'm all for everybody voting, I'm, you know, I'm the last person to disenfranchise anybody. I think that they all have to have an opportunity, but we do offer other ways, we have early voting. I mean, besides early voting, we have the absentee voting process, plus election day voting. So, I plan on addressing it with the county. I think this is a, the first time that we've had a early voting in a small election, and so we'll make sure that the county is aware of the cost that, you know, that, you know, it came down to. If it wasn't for that and the precinct relocations, we would have been closer to the, you know, $10,000. So, I just want the, everyone to be aware of that.
So, with the history of the county right now, with the increase in the assessor's fee, somehow I don't think they'll be keen to roll back their requirement for something like that. The other thing is question, and that's just a statement, as far as other communities that were on May 5th, did they also have to go through the same process?
I plan on reaching out to those communities, I think there was like six communities that had an election in May, but I do plan on reaching out to them to find out what their costs were, or if they are part of the Oakland County contract. That being said, we, being a small city, it would be very hard to do early voting on our own, so we almost need to share that responsibility with another jurisdiction and, you know, with the county, because of the equipment costs. It would just be almost impossible to get workers and to do that for nine days for a smaller community. So, Troy has, you know, obviously joined with us, and they have a bigger staff. In fact, their staff has been gracious enough to handle Claussen's portion on the forefront, you know, on early voting, which has helped us a lot, because we're a staff of two. And it makes it very difficult for us to be present in the early voting site, you know, during the election, because we're very busy here doing the election. So, I'm not, I'm not opposed to the early voting, I'm not opposed to the way that it's working, I just think that there needs to be some consideration if, to allow for communities to opt out when it's a small election.
Because an early election for, or midterm election for Troy would not be as, is inconvenient, or for lack of a better term, or burdensome from the county's perspective in that regard.
So, yeah, so I think this is kind of a, the first trial, so I think that we're going to have a conversation. For what it's worth, we'll try to make it, make the county aware of the cost, and, you know, it kind of put us in a bind, you know, for this small number turning out to vote. All we can do is, is reach out, so. I just wanted to say that publicly, I know a lot of people were waiting for that cost, and we, we just got the invoice today, so I thought I would report on it tonight.
So, the same cost would have been, if Troy had had their own, that wouldn't have been mitigated by them?
If Troy would have had early voting with us, we would have split that cost, would have been $5,000, or, you know, whatever that difference would be. So, it's a little more palatable when it's split, but for a small community to host that total cost, it's, and there would be still more staff involved and such when you're involving a large community like Troy. So, I think it's worth at least letting them know, you know, the burden that it put on us, you know, for the cost.
So, this expectation from the county then would be acknowledgement, or that they would do something, but what would be, the horse is out of the barn at this point, right?
And when, we went to the training, or the presentation from the county just before the May election, and I think that the feeling I got from the presentation from the county was that, that it, they're a wait-and-see kind of thing, so I'm not sure that they're opposed to it. I just don't think that they know what the turnout was going to be, and they wanted to see how a smaller election would be impacted. So, I think, you know, we'll give the information, you know, presented to them in a letter, and just see if they'll at least consider that option for opting out. I know Madison Heights was one that had an election, and they're the ones that posed the question during the training, to say, you know, is there an option for us to opt out? You know, so that's Madison Heights, that's not even, they're, you know, slightly, I think they're larger, you know, community as far as precincts and voters. So, they asked it, but the comment from the county clerk was, you know, we want to do it for every election, so that's what we did.
I'm curious what the response is.
So, we'll see, and I do plan on reaching out, I just was waiting for the final numbers. And that's all I have tonight.
Thank you. Cara, do you have a city attorney report for us this evening?
No report, but I will provide a legal opinion on the default, the definition of default. I'm, I'll be reviewing case law and providing an opinion on that.
Can you also utilize our water bill billings, right? Because I think that's, to me, that's stopping, that's the point to me.
Yes, I'll look at the relevant factual evidence and compare that with the case law.
Thank you, appreciated that. City manager's report, Mr. Riker?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Sewer cleaning inspection continues, and we are currently at 63 complete, 63% complete with the citywide televising and cleaning of our sewers. We still anticipate this project to be completed in August. As a reminder, we have a sectional map of the city that is updated when necessary and is located on the city's website under department, under DBW and Engineering, and then under Cleaning and Televising. It's 4th of July week here in Claussen, please visit Claussen4july.com for details, pending your questions, that's my report.
Thank you. Any questions?
As far as November and potential ballot initiatives, when would we need to have something as far as language? What would be the deadline?
I put that in a Friday report. Michelle, help me out, was that August 12th?
I think August 12th, I don't have it with me, but I believe that's what we discussed.
Okay. My thought is regarding the sale of Renshaw.
Sir, I said, in that report, in that Friday report, I said, if someone publicly socializes it, I will put it on the agenda.
Okay. I would like to see it on the agenda.
I will have it on the agenda.
Any other comments? Council comments? Ms. Moffett?
I always believe in giving praise when praise is due, so I want to sincerely thank the city manager for trying to hold the council accountable to the charter, I very much appreciate you bringing that up. And then the other thing I'd like to ask is, there's comments that were made today during public comment, there's a gentleman who's come here several times with issues with his sewer and sewer backup, there's other chatter on social media, people having trouble with their sewer. What is, what is our plan in place, or what can we do to start working more closely with these residents that have problems, to help them feel heard and get answers and tools to deal with some of these issues?
I provided, not just Ms. Beatty, but also a couple of the other individuals who you're familiar with, that, in fact, one gentleman in particular, their cammering results, not only on their street, but also their particular lead, and Ms. Beatty's, that had not occurred to this, as of this date.
But they don't feel like the issues are closed, so how can we get mediation to bring these, these issues to close?
I need some baseline information, and then work with the city engineer on that to see what we can do.
Because I'd like to see us do something, workshops, something like that, to help, you know, there's, there's an uptick of these concerns, so having a pathway, like I said, for mediation or something where these people can feel heard and we can bring them, you know, to close. There's, you know, the Mr. Wolf who's come here several times, Ms. Beatty's been here several times, how can we bring these issues to resolution? It seems like there's got to be a way to close them out.
I think the way is that we move forward with our plan for infrastructure. That's plain and simple. We can't do one section prior to something else. There has to be a progression. Unfortunately, you can't do them tandem, they have to be linear. Am I out of turn on that? So, unfortunately, we can't just do, I don't know, say, you know, well, I'm trying to think of the street that's over there by the park, right? Do that first, and then go back to some of the other streets and water mains and sewers that are uphill, so to speak. That would be counterproductive, that would be counterproductive.
The goal, I ran into Julia the other day, and, you know, I, it's really difficult when there's nothing you can say to someone, and you're just like, I'm sorry, I can't do anything, and I think you do respond to people, and I do appreciate that, but I think there is a frustration, because people don't understand what can and can't be done. When you live with something for 12 years, whatever, and, you know, I remember her from when I first joined council, I remember it, because Matt lived across the street from you, and you guys shared, that was your common bond, right? And you're just one of many, it's one of many instances throughout the community, and there is no magic wand to fix any of these things. Unfortunately, the problems are deep, and they're expensive, and they're, and you're correct, there has to be a process. And I do think you communicate those things, I want to give you credit for that, because I do see the comments coming back and forth, but when people don't get their items addressed quickly, which is what everyone wants, I think a couple of the candidates yesterday were really good about saying, people want to hear, people want to have someone to talk to, and then they want to know that they were heard, and I think that you do a decent job of that, but I think when it's something recurring like this, I think all of us need to find a better way to do it, so that it's, so that people don't get frustrated at the last minute. But we do have a plan, and I think you convey that all the time, and I would say that it's very clinical, in that we have this plan, blah, 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 blah.
Madam Mayor, for the record, I was asked, Ms. Beatty, then tell the truth, I have communicated with you many times, so don't come to the public microphone and accuse this administration or anyone not being responsive to you, and that we've just overlooked this. I've been in touch with you and communicated with you many times.
I didn't say that you haven't been in communication with me, I've said, I've said that I haven't heard from DPW, and that I have relayed this information over the course of 11 years, and there's not a resolution.
But the resolution is, but there isn't a resolution, right? That's the truth, is there isn't a resolution until the city continues with the plans that they're doing. And eight years, right here, right? And didn't know anything in the beginning, didn't understand anything, which is why knowledge of this place is really important. It's hard to get everything all at once, because you're not exposed to everything all at once. It's frustrating, because we, like I said, we can't just fix things, it's not possible. But knowing that there's a plan, and understanding the plan, and seeing progress is good, and maybe that's where we need to work better. And I, and she, when I spoke with you the other day, she acknowledged that she spoke with you, I don't think she said that exactly, she's just frustrated, and people get frustrated, so.
Madam Mayor, if I may, additionally, we're dealing with infrastructure that is 100 years old, 100 years old, so we're just getting this bond underway within the last couple of years. This bond and this infrastructure repair should have been done 40 years ago. Why it took that long, I couldn't begin to say, other than the fact that there was some turmoil prior, in prior councils, before we got here, we have a fantastic city manager, and assistant city manager, and administration who understood what this city needed right now, and we're getting it done. Unfortunately, it's not fast enough, because we should have done it a long time ago, and unfortunately, I wish it could have been done yesterday, I really honestly do, because I understand your situation, and I feel for anybody who's had repeated circumstances like that. But we can't go and just do one and then not do it in a process, that has to be followed. And I hope you can, again, bear with us as we get through and work through that process, but I appreciate your patience, and that's all we can ask, I apologize.
I was home today for five minutes before I came here, and as I was pulling stuff out of my car, one of my neighbors passed by, and I live on a street that's a little bad in the beginning, very bad in the beginning, and it's a short street, so you'd think it would be a cheap, easy fix, but he said, get the roads fixed, and I said, we're number 28, I think we're number 28. If we're not 28, we're a little bit past that. Everybody wants something, and they're our priorities, and I do appreciate that this council and our city manager took the risk of what other councils and what other city managers did not do before us, which is to do the difficult thing. It's not, it was not fun to sit here and decide how much money we were going to go and ask ourselves, our residents, for, so that we could actually start the work and hopefully make some good impact on this community. But our city manager created a plan, he presented it to council, council unanimously decided how much money we were going to go out for, we didn't go for the low amount, we didn't go for the mid amount, we went for the high amount, because we want it to be impactful, we want to see things done, and I think that's something we can all, I'm proud of that as a council, I'm proud of your work, I'm very proud of what you've done.
Just for your awareness, it's a team, we're very much a team.
See, thank you, and that's true, and you create a team atmosphere here, and I think we feel like that as well, because you share information. And extending that, like, we're a team with our community too, and I think, you know, maybe we just need to look at things a little bit tighter sometimes, just to ensure that we're delivering, but in a way that people understand it, that's all. And that's not a criticism, it's a, people's needs are different, that's all. So, that went everywhere. Councilwoman comments?
No, I just agree with Councilmember Shepherd. Unfortunately, we inherited this problem, and now we're dealing with it, and the community is now bearing the price. It's a 65...
It's a $65 million issue, but it's being addressed. The first $1.3 million went into, again, cleaning and inspection of the sewers because you don't want to enact a large plan until you know exactly what you're dealing with. The cleaning and inspecting of the sewers is not the end-all, it's the starting point. From there, DPW will be able to formulate an effective plan on how to deal with all the city's sewers. And right now, we were told that out of the $65 million that's being spent, there could be as possibly as much as $10 million spent on sewers alone. Forget the rows for a moment. So yes, things are happening, they're happening slowly. And if you're the one that's suffering, another day is too long. But I just would say to you, please, have patience, things are in progress.
Anything else? Councilwoman Shepherd?
Just wish everybody, whoops. Wish everybody Happy Independence Day and be safe and have fun.
Great. I want to do a quick thank you to our Fourth of July committee and all of their volunteers. Fourth of July is off to a good start here in Claussen with the concert last Wednesday, the kiddie bike parade on Saturday, and the fun run on Sunday. Lots of people were out, we had good weather, and it was great, it was a great start. Check the calendar for the event activities. A shout out to our DPW, our police department, our fire department, and our administration because these fun activities that take place for us and our friends and our family to enjoy take a toll on our city workers and our staff that's small. So just to take a little knowledge that these guys are working extra hard to get these things in for all of us, and just if you see anybody, tell them thank you because we do appreciate it. And I would like to share that cinema in the streets takes place July 12th on Main Street, the meeting.
July 19.
Oh, July 19, sorry. I was thinking it was one after about the strike we moved it. July 19, don't go on the 12th because there won't be a movie unless you bring your own. So July 19, and it's the Force Be With You, something like that.
And it's the Force Awakens.
Force Awakens, they're all the same to me. Force Awakens.
Ouch.
I'm not a Star Wars person. But, or they're going to have fun things there, and go, you're going to like it, and there's stuff for kids to do. So there's that. And then just one quick thing, I received the nicest letter, handwritten, beautiful letter, from one of our late neighbors who has lived in this community for 60 years, and her comments were something to the effect of, this city looks beautiful. She commented about the flower downtown, the grooming, the beautifications taking place. She talked about the beautiful buildings, the business owners, and also the beautiful buildings for the residents who live here. She talked about how she's seen in 60 years, many changes, some not so good and some very good. She talked about how our city is looking beautiful, that we are ready and prepared to house our, welcome our friends and our family, new and old, to our community to celebrate the Fourth of July. So I'm hoping that, oh, I want to say thank you to a resident who took the time to give kudos, and she's had to give kudos to the entire team that does, that's taking care of all of those things. And I think we hear a lot of voices sometimes that point out the things we need to fix, and those are very important, but it's always extremely important to hear the good things too. So thank you to the people who continuously bring out the good things, and thank you to this team who continues to deliver for people who are lifelong residents of this community. With that, I'll welcome someone to make a motion for us to dismiss.
I move adjourn.
Port.
Thank you. Roll call, please, Michelle.
Mayor Protem Moffett?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Mayor Milan?